Good evening, everyone. The time is now 5:01 PM. And I would like to call to order the May 15th, 2024 Operations Budget and Fiscal Affairs Committee Meeting. Welcome, everyone. My name is Shayla Adams Staffer, the Chair of this Committee, and the District 4 Representative of the Prince George's County Board of Education. We will now have introductions from committee members, starting with Board Members, Administration Staff, Board Office Staff, and all other guests. Tonight, this committee will hear about operations, CIP, and budget updates. So I will go ahead and turn it over to my colleagues to introduce themselves at this time. Thank you.
Hi, good day. This is Board Member Jocelyn Route at large.
Hello, my name is Rain Rivera Forbes, and I am the 43rd Student Member of the Board.
Good afternoon. This is Mia Barton, the Administrator Secretary for the Board.
Good afternoon, Charoska Coleman, Chief Operating Officer.
Good afternoon, Jason Washington, Associate Superintendent of Supporting Services.
Good afternoon, Michelle Winston, Director of Internal Audit.
Thank you so much. Oh, I'm sorry.
Good afternoon, Lisa Howe, Chief Financial Officer.
Sorry, Chief Howe. Ms. Barton, will you please call the roll?
Shayla Adams Staffer.
Present.
Dr. Kenneth Harris. Ms. Jocelyn Route.
Present.
Ms. Judy Mickens Murray. Ms. Rain Rivera Forbes.
Present.
We have a quorum present. They have a motion to adopt the May 15th meeting agenda.
Summat.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adopt the May 15th meeting agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. The motion passes. We need three votes to pass a motion. The agenda is adopted. Approval of the April 17th meeting minutes. Now, I believe this was the meeting that we had to postpone. Mr. Patrick Fitzpatrick, am I correct in that?
No.
Not okay.
We postponed the March meeting.
The March meeting, okay. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the April 17th, 2024 meeting minutes?
Summat.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the April 17th, 2024 meeting minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion passes, and the agenda is adopted. So we have no public, registered public comment speakers this evening, so we're going to move into item 3.1, which are our discussion and action items around transportation and operations updates. So I recognize Dr. Charoska Coleman, our Chief Operating Officer, to give us updates on transportation. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Board Member Adams Staffer, and members of the public. Thank you so much for being here. So since our last OBFA meeting, the school administration completed nine community information sessions to engage with stakeholders about the five prioritized recommendations being implemented to improve the efficiency of our transportation system. The attendees were engaged in the discussions at each meeting and gave positive feedback that reinforced our urgency with moving this work forward. The community also raised pertinent questions that we worked to answer in real time. But we were very excited that one of the nine sessions was also livestreamed to accommodate any families that were not able to attend in person, and that can be viewed through the PGCPs website at any point in time. In addition, the Transportation Department presented at the April 25th and May 11th Board Meetings to go further into detail about the five prioritized recommendations. To be clear, for those who may still need clarity, the five prioritized recommendations are the shifting bell times, two, service level differentiation and target stop consolidation, or bus stops are moving. Third, the walk zone audit, which means that it's an opportunity for us to identify those stops that may need to be shifted based on eligibility for a bus, living close to school. The codified opt-out, and that's what we talk about, if you don't need a bus, tell us. And then finally, ensuring that we improve user ability of the Stop Finder app and the user-centered design to enhance customer service. So we are excited about these ongoing improvements. We look forward to Director Baldwin and I at presenting, along with other members of the administration, at the upcoming June 13th and June 27th Board Meetings to continue to track our progress. With that, we are open for any questions.
Thank you so much. I wanted to say I had a chance to attend one of the meetings here in District 4. It was very well attended, and I know I left with a lot of my questions answered, so I'm really grateful for those community sessions. I just wanted to share also something that was put together to support the public in understanding how all of these recommendations are being implemented. This, if you go on Board Docs under the April 25th meeting, you'll see the implementation tracker that Dr. Coleman and his team have put together that show sort of what the community can expect. And so this is helpful in thinking about sort of all of these pieces that are working together. So thank you so much. I know that we asked a lot of questions at the last board meeting. So I don't think that I have any specific questions right now other than how do you feel the board can be supportive with the walk zone audit in terms of helping advocate for more walkable streets generally within the district?
So I think you just hit it on the head, just looking at opportunities to advocate for pedestrian safety. It is a partnership that we are already working to leverage with our police department partners. We know as a, as a community that we don't have enough crossing guards to support the needs in our district. There is a shortage of crossing guards across the, the school system through the police department. And so putting staff in place as crossing guards is not going to be the ultimate answer. That is one part of the answer. It's also going to be advocating for pedestrian safety measures to include traffic mitigation devices that can help our communities more walkable, increasing the use of sidewalks, crosswalks, speed humps, flashing lights that will slow traffic. You know, all of those pieces that we know mitigate speeding and increase traffic safety. So in every sphere that we can advocate for more resources in those areas, that would be helpful.
Okay, thank you so much. And I know that we have several board members, led by Board Member Jackson and others that have come together, you know, with the administration and other organizations to develop our Safe Passage Project. So I encourage folks to sign up for the Safe Passage Project to volunteer to help students in high-traffic areas.
Before we go to Board Member Route, one other thing I would like to add, Ms. Adams Staffer, is we heard from our community members at the Community Information Sessions about the desire to connect with one another as parents, to help support one another if they are taking advantage of walking to school. So the audit report that was done by Formative talks about ideas like the walking school bus, right? Where families in a community can come together and actually provide that safe passage that you just mentioned for all of the children in their charge as a way to, to support the children getting to and from school safely. So just ways to, as board members, to help support connecting families to families that are in this walkable zone so that they can help one another get their children to school and from school safely.
Absolutely. Thank you. And before I go to Board Member Route, I just wanted to see if you might be able to, just very briefly, I know that more information will be coming to community members about the, the transition to our new platform with Synergy that's happening. I know that that's affecting, impacting a broader scope here. But if we could just, even if it's just a couple of sentences about what's to come, and then we, you know, I know that you all will be doing a lot of reaching out, outreach and communication, just like a, just a quick, just update for folks on what, just generally what they can expect with that. Thank you so much.
Sure, no problem. Our current student information system is called SchoolMax. We will be transitioning to a new system called Synergy. What this system requires and what we really need as a school district is to have contact information for all of our families. And I'm going to say a little bit, and then I'm going to pass it to Director Baldwin to speak to why it impacts transportation. But this student information system will allow parents to have a one-stop shop for attendance information, for grade information, for student schedule information, in addition to receive transportation updates. And so that is a critical component, a connection, where we need a good phone number and a good email address, especially for all of our families, so we can stay in contact. So I'm going to pause there, let Director Baldwin talk about how that information is utilized by transportation to help parents stay in the know.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. It's important for us to receive good information in order for us to be able to route students and assign students appropriately to our different stops and then to a bus. And so we depend on that information, and that transition now, moving from SchoolMax to Synergy, will help us. And so with our partners, with our partners from that team to be able to get our parents and constituents to do our address verifications, to ensure that they have a proper address in our system, an email address, just gives us good information that we can pass along, that we can share, that we can ensure that we have properly assigned their students a bus stop. As you know, that's one of the recommendations that we are working on is the opt-out component. And that is also an additional step that will be taken place within the synergy component for parents that do not need transportation, tell us. And so they will have this opportunity within the synergy to be able to denote that in this synergy system, if they do not need transportation, they will have that opportunity to market within synergy as well. So just being able to have a place to have good information for transportation to be able to assign bus stops to our students.
Okay, thank you so much. And as a kindergarten, I'm excited about everything being in one place.
And if I have the ability to share my screen.
Yeah, hold on one second. Oh, and I'd like to acknowledge Vice Chair Dr. Harris, who's joined us as well. Thank you.
So just to pull up one snippet of the presentation that was shared at the board meeting that I think really speaks directly to your question, Ms. Adams Staffer, is between today and the end of the school year in June, the school district will be sending out to our families a survey. And through that survey, we're asking for information that Director Baldwin just talked about. Verify the name of the student, the email address of the family, the school name, a great phone number to reach you, and we're also going to ask that family if they are opting out of transportation or not. So again, don't need a bus, tell us. And if you do need a bus later on, certainly it isn't a problem. As long as you still qualify for a bus, we will add that bus back. But if you know that your child won't be riding the bus, all we're asking is that you tell us between now and the end of the school year, and that way it will help us make our bus transportation system more efficient. The synergy system actually migrates all of the information from SchoolMax, and that happens during what we call the "go dark" period. So that will be from June 20th until July 21st. And at that time, the system will be down. No one will be able to access it, whether it be internally with PGCPs staff or externally from parents. But after July 21st, on July 22nd, you can see that all new PGCPs students will receive an email. That's why that's so important, with an activation key to enroll in the new ParentView, which is what it sounds like, the ParentView module of the overall synergy system. And then all existing PGCPs students will receive an email with an activation key to enroll in synergy. So we're really asking our families to touch the system twice. First, by just telling us your email address, phone number, school name, child's name, and whether or not they're opting out for transportation. And then after July 21st, on the 22nd, we need all families to enroll in ParentView. And that will give them access to a wealth of information and allow transportation to reach out to them in real time.
Thank, thank you so much for that update. I'm going to pass it over to Board Member Route with your question. Thank you.
Okay, thanks so much. I just had a question as to have we reached out to our county council to, one, tell them about possibly like collaboration? I know we have, we're, we're working with the police department, but our county council, they're like in the thick of their budget season. And so I think that if we have, operationally, if we have the PGCPs staff that's assigned to do legislative work to really let them know about the work that we're doing with our transportation updates, because we will need their support not only to consider looking at, I know there's a, there's a committee working on sidewalks in the county council, and so I don't know if we are members or if we're even invited to that committee. But I would, I would like to connect, who do I connect with Vice Chair Harrison? Is that you, Dr. Baldwin, or is that you, Dr. Coleman?
So thank you for that question. The answer is yes. We have provided the county council, actually as, recently as May, updates around our five prioritized recommendations, and we provided them with a copy of the entire presentation to bring them up to speed, because as you said, they are an important stakeholder group in this entire process. Director Baldwin and myself can serve as a kind of conduit to connect with Dr. Harris and the team, and certainly we'll bring in our Chief of Staff Boyd to support that work as well. We are also looking to connect with the Department of Public Works and Transportation, as well as State Highway Administration, and we're going to do that in concert with the police department.
Oh, very fine. I know Chair Ivey has specifically been working on the Zone Zero zones. There's state funding, just to look at, you know, some of the deaths that have taken place. So I'm sure they would welcome this information and also advocating with the state and the state partners. So thank you for that. The only other question similar to this one is outreach toolkits for board members as we are, you know, just your liaison in the community. So maybe that's a communications thing, but it's kind of your thing. So I just wanted to see, you know, just to like save the dates, like we know these things are coming. We know your drop, you know, your, your zone periods. We know your blackout, you know, we know your beautiful illustration. Thank you for providing that to the full board at our last meeting. But I, I think we should, I'm requesting, as a member of this committee, if we can go just a little bit further and provide these, you know, this information. Because, you know, as much with our parents and our teachers and our students, we have to be repetitive with our information so it could stick. But I'm thoroughly appreciative of the work that you all are doing to improve our transportation system.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much. And you are correct. I'll take that information back to our communications team. I know that they did prepare a toolkit for our principal leaders so they can help support the communication needed across our community, and I'm sure that can be adapted for our board members. So we'll make sure we share that.
Thank you so much. Okay, we'll move now to item 3.2, CIP updates with the Public Private Partnership, P3. So I recognize Mr. Jason Washington to give us updates on the Public Private Partnership. Thank you.
Yes, the, the real updates that we have now, last Thursday, the, the board approved the increase of the availability threshold, affordability threshold for the program as requested by the county. And now we are finishing up the exclusive negotiating agreement period. We have heard the request of the IAC as they have statutory authority to approve the deal, have submitted all significant deal documents to them as of this past Monday, and they are reviewing them to provide us with any comments, concerns, issues, so that we can address them prior to their ability to make a recommendation to the commission. And that's what we're working on right now. In addition to that, we are continuing and actually waiting for the state's response to IAC, not IAC, to county concerns on the memorandum of understanding. We hope to get their responses by tomorrow and hope to finalize the MOU within the week so that we can bring it to the board for vote and approval within the next couple of weeks. All putting us on track for a, a July approval of the contract and commercial close of the agreement and a financial close of the agreement in August. August, roughly around August 10th or so. So we are working hard so that our schedule is not impacted negatively and that we can open the schools on time and look forward to, to getting to that monumental milestone. I can say that all parties understand the timing that's here, being Maryland Stadium Authority, the Interagency Commission on School Construction, the county, and PGCPs, and are working as quickly as we can to, to address the issues and get aligned so that we can move forward with this transaction. But on the, the project side now, we do have planning approval for the new Templeton that's been contemplated. We do have planning approval for the new Robert Frost and also the new Margaret Brent. So we have, that was part of what this process is, is that they are advancing this program right now so that no time is lost. So when we close, we're able to move right into construction activities. And so that's where we are as relates to the P3, and we'll open it up for any questions that the, the board may have at this time.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the update. I wanted to know if you could possibly send to the board chair some of the county concerns that you all are mitigating through right now. I, I just haven't seen anything on what their concerns are, and just I think it would be helpful if, I don't know if the chair has seen that, but I know I would like to know just what some of their questions are. And also, I know that we have many different pieces happening this summer, and I was wondering if you could send a timeline to the chair as well that would just give a small, just detail of sort of what are some of the key important dates so that we can sort of understand what's happening and with which players. And then lastly, I know I've asked about just the MBE participation of the, the group that is facilitating this phase of the P3, and that's something that the board is required to monitor and to, to be, you know, just vigilant of. And so I'm just asking that in your implementing, will your implementation work that you all do and you're, you're planning that there is in a quarterly report or whatever report you all are planning to give to the board on the progress of the P3, that it includes MBE sort of participation updates? And I'd like to recognize Board Member Zippert Miller. Thank you for joining us as well.
Definitely that we can make sure that the, that the quarterly report, it currently does that, but we will make sure that, that is highlighted as, that is definitely one of our priority issues here. Specifically on the, I believe, and I can send it again, I believe that the, the memo that we shared, or that was shared by the, the board chair had the concerns in them. I can, one is, and I can follow up and send a email with the three concerns that are there. They're all financial in nature, and they all deal with the affordability issue for the county and their ability to capture the true cost on their balance sheets going forward. And finally, on the timeline of, of activities, definitely, we, we can, can pull that out and provide that as well.
Okay, thank you very much. I don't see any other hands up. So I'd, I'd like to move forward, colleagues, if that's all right with you, to our next section here. Moving on to item.
A Board Member Harris has his hand up.
Okay, go ahead. Thank you. You can go ahead.
Sorry, colleagues. I couldn't get off of me here. Actually, Chair, I need a, can I have a go back to the previous agenda item around walking zones?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Coleman. Quickly, and I think my colleague, Board Member Route, might have touched on this a bit. Did we discuss how with the increase in walking zones, how we're partnering more with the police department to address the need for crossing guards and what that looks like?
We did touch that. We are in communication with the police department, specifically their crossing guard unit, to determine a priority around where we are seeing needs for infrastructure upgrades to support greater pedestrian safety. I touched on the fact that we have a shortage of walking, of crossing guards throughout our district and that we will utilize that resource, but that cannot be the only solution. That needs to be part of a solution. And that in addition to that, we need to advocate to State Highway Administration. We need to advocate to the Department of Public Works and Transportation around these areas of priority that we've identified so that we can see some significant increases in investment to support pedestrian safety. In addition to that, we've committed to having regular communication with one another to make certain that we are maximizing the resources that we do currently have available. We, we also talked about, the question was raised, how can board members support this walk zone effort and the changes that are coming? Okay, very good.
Yeah, I just missed, I missed the first part. No, I appreciate you. Thank you for the clarity there. All right, thank you, Chair. That's my time.
Thank you. To Ms. Winston, thank you for being here. We have under 3.3 internal audit report. I yield the floor to Ms. Michelle Winston to give us the third quarter internal audit report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do not have that report ready for you this evening. Certainly, I will keep you posted when it is available, possibly by your next meeting if there's one more on YouTube.
Thank you so much. And that, I definitely know that you mentioned that prior to. I saw it here on the agenda, and I didn't know if anything had changed, but we will, you know, look forward to that. And of course, we are sad that we're going to be having you transition. We're very grateful for you, Ms. Winston, for all the work that you've done for the board, for PGCPs. And just you really do a wonderful job of keeping us informed on ways that the school system can improve and always, always taking our feedback, going back and elevating our concerns and improving. So I just wanted to say thank you so much for all of your work, Ms. Winston.
Thank you so much for, for your comments, and it's been a pleasure working with you and especially on this committee. I've always appreciated. and especially, um, this committee. I've always, uh, appreciated your, um, support for the, uh, internal audit, um, department.
Thank you. I recognize my colleague, uh, board member Route at this time.
Thanks, uh, Chair Adam Stafford. I also would like to just thank Ms. Winston, um, for working intimately with this committee. Um, in my short time being on the committee, I just, I'm not sad that you're, I'm so happy that you get to enjoy your retirement and you will be transitioning and it's like, uh, it's like starting school all over again. I'm sure you're like already, you have like your schedule and everything. And so, um, I'm just looking forward to getting where you are retirement and I think it's beautiful. And I just wanted to say thank you for all that you've done over the years for, um, our children, our students, the families, all of our constituents that have worked with the, our, you know, our stakeholders, our vendors. You got a really tough, tough, big job. So we just thank you, you know, just for your work and how you've just stuck with the school system for oh so long. So that's awesome.
And I'll pass it over to, um, uh, board member Rivera Forbes.
Thank you, Chair Adam Stafford. I also wanted to give a few, um, words of a thank you. I know I haven't been on the board that long and I haven't been able to work with you as long as some other board members, but I appreciate all that you've done. You have always given very valuable information. You have been very, very great and thorough in what you need to do for the board and in support of P G C P S and I'm just grateful for it as a student because I know so much happens behind the scenes outside of us just going to class and listening to our teachers. There's so many people that play a big role in P G C P S and you are one of those people. So I thank you so much as a student leader and hopefully one day in like a couple of years, you know, I'll be at retirement too.
All right, thank you. And I acknowledge Vice Chair Harris at this time.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to echo my colleagues, Ms. Winston. Um, and I won't, won't get on my soapbox, but you know, you and I go, go way, way back. Um, so I do appreciate everything you've done since my time on the board. And even before that, coming through school and, and being such a great resource, um, to me and, and my friends and, uh, that group as we were matriculated through the school system. So I'm extremely appreciative of you. I hope you enjoy retirement, but not too much. Um, I hope you get the rest that you deserve. I hope that you enjoy your time as, as a grandmother and you continue to be blessed in everything that you do. So I really do appreciate you again and thank you for everything you've done within my life and both on and off the school board. All right.
Thank you so very much. Thank you to, to everyone, um, um, for your, um, for your comments. Um, um, it, it's been a journey, but it's been a very worthwhile journey, um, to work with our, our school system and, um, to work and to serve in, 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 in the community on that we live. And I, I don't take that lightly. Uh, I'm very blessed to have had, um, the career and the opportunity to have served. So thank you so much, um, for taking the time, um, to, uh, give your comments and your, um, uh, kind words.
Thank you, Ms. Winston. Oh, hold on one second. All right, we're going to move now to item three point four with, um, Chief Howe.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, everyone. Um, just wanted to provide a brief update on where we are in budget process right now. Um, we are two weeks away approximately from receiving an approved budget back from the county council. They're going through their process now to deliberate and evaluate all budgets. They are required by law to have final decisions and a budget transmittal to us by June first. So we're anxiously awaiting what that will look like, um, on this past Monday. So in the meantime, uh, we're continuing to work on our budget reconciliation process, um, or the start of that reconciliation process. So this past Monday, we received final, uh, revenue information from the state of Maryland. So we'll be going through and updating and refreshing, um, our revenue assumptions, just so we know where we are from a final revenue perspective. Um, we have finished our student-based budgeting process, which just closed out a couple of weeks ago. So we're now going through the process of getting all those changes loaded into our budget and getting all of that reconciled as well. Um, we know that we have a budget gap going into the final stretch of the budget process. We have about a month's time to get those items, um, identified, um, decisions made and resolved. Um, we are expecting there to be a gap of around thirty to forty million dollars, possibly more. We're still working through the numbers, um, pending this final last, uh, reconciliation of the state aid document that we received. Um, but we know that based off of the county executive's proposed budget, her budget was, uh, you know, thirty-two million dollars less than what we had in our requested budget. Um, on top of that, we, we met with the Education, Workforce and Development Committee meeting, uh, committee a couple of weeks ago. Um, we not only sort of outlined the differences between our requested budget and the county executive's proposed budget, we also outlined several unfunded mandates that came out of this most recent legislative session and asked for additional funding to support those unfunded mandates. Um, and so we're looking to see what may come out of the county, um, executive's final approved budget and what may be included in there. But in the meantime, we're operating under the worst case scenario assumption that the proposed budget that we saw is the proposed budget that will be approved. Um, so we'll know in a couple of weeks exactly where we stand, but in the meantime, we're continuing to work through efforts to close that budget gap. Um, as members of the, uh, committee, uh, this committee recently saw in our last financial review, we're continuing to look for ways to utilize some of our savings in twenty-four to pay off, um, our lease purchase agreements early, which will help close the budget gap because we won't have to make those payments in twenty-five if we can make them out of our savings in twenty-four. So we are working through as many efforts as we can to pay off items early, um, given some of the savings we have in our twenty-four budget, um, but we're still going to have to cut. So we're still going through that process of trying to prioritize, um, the reductions that we're going to have to make in order to close the budget gap. And, uh, you know, by the June twenty-seventh meeting, we will be going through the process of having the board, uh, vote and approve, hopefully our final approved budget for fiscal year twenty-five.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm going to turn it over to board member Route, uh, for the first question here.
Thank you, Chair Adam Stafford. So I am, um, just trying to understand at what point will, uh, members of this committee, um, be afforded the opportunity to see, um, the different scenarios? Um, I think, um, you know, we have, we want to see the what-ifs and I, I, I can accept the fact that you're saying that we're still crunching numbers and things, but we know that we have a budget shortfall. And, you know, what I worry is that we will get to the ninth hour and we will be presented something and there wouldn't be enough time for the board, um, to take its necessary action. Um, so is that something that we can be sent, this committee, so that we can understand? I was hoping for maybe a presentation today or something like that, but I, I, I know, you know, we're not going to get that, but I, I'm just a little worried running up on time. It's tight and we, we already know. We know through your report that we will have at least a thirty million dollar deficit. So I'm sure that thirty million would come from somewhere.
Yep, yep. Um, so we, within the next month that we have, we're certainly looking to be able to keep the, um, board members informed of the direction and the path forward in order to close that budget gap. So um, we're hoping within the next two weeks, we'll have something that we'll be able to share. Um, obviously, we're working through that process internally, but we want to be able to have an opportunity for board members to be able to react to the, you know, suggested items that we're proposing in order to close the budget gap. Um, you know, and, you know, now that we have final revenue numbers as well from the state, we at least know that those numbers are not going to be changing. We're going back and also revalidating some of our other budget assumptions that are not tied to the state or federal. Um, we're also finalizing our, um, restricted grants as well. So that's the whole process as well, sort of revalidating those numbers, but the unrestricted budget gap is what is, we're concerned about. And so we're, you know, we need, you know, we're getting close to the point where we're going to be finishing up, um, that sort of path forward, reviewing that internally as a leadership and then certainly want to be able to share the information well before the June twenty-seventh board meeting. So you're not going to just see it for the first time then. But we just need to kind of get through our own internal process here to ensure that we're comfortable with what, um, is being considered. I think I did share I've been in so many meetings, I'm losing track of which one, but I think there was a presentation that I shared somewhere that outlined a sort of a list of some items that we were considering in order to close that budget gap. And I think some members of this may, I, I can't remember who, I think I shared with someone before. That sort of outlined what those potential reductions would be. So, um, but it's, it's definitely going to be a challenge. Um, and you know, the budget, your budget is only as good as the information that you have when you're putting it together and the assumptions change almost on a daily basis. Where's not, not literally, but someone is coming down the hall with, hey, something else has popped up that's not considered in our budget. What can we do? I'm like, self-fund it because we have a gap. So we're trying to, we're trying to be mindful of those items that are continuing to pop up, um, almost on a weekly basis, like, hey, this isn't in our budget. This isn't our budget. You know, can we add it to the list? I'm like, not really, because we, we're, we're trying to reduce. We don't have the ability to kind of really add at this point.
Chief Howe, I, I definitely understand. I just know this thirty million dollar number has been tossed around for quite some time, at least two months since we knew about, um, the, this, you know, this, the bills that were changing. So it's just really hard for me to, um, you know, just receive that, you know, we kind of don't know. And I get it, like, we, I work for, I work for the feds. We, we, we still on the C R, you know, so um, continuing resolutions happen, all this, but that's when we, we prepare, right? We plan and, you know, we're prepared and, you know, just as a member of this committee, I just don't feel too prepared that I know too much information um, because this is an active season with the county council. They're actively working on the budget. And so if we would know this information, we would, as board members, do our due diligence to support the needs of our school system. Um, but essentially, if we don't have the information, we have these big bucket items of the catastrophic losses that would be hit with our school system. Um, you know, we, we just want to be able to help and we can help. Um, especially me in my seat. I mean, I, I represent, uh, the county council. And so if I could at least go back and share any of the, um, the, the different things so that, you know, we can be fully funded plus, you know? Um, so it would be helpful to really get that information because I can't even do the work of the board if I don't know what areas are affected. Thank you, Chair.
One thing that will be helpful in the presentation that I provided to you at the last board meeting on the last page, it did outline those unfunded mandates that would be helpful to have advocacy around the council being able to fully fund those unfunded mandates because they're not currently in our budget. But we've been informed through the legislative process that we're now responsible for these items. And so, um, they were shared, like I said, at the E W D committee as well and asking for additional funding from the county in order to cover these unfunded mandates. Uh, but certainly anything that you and your colleagues can do around those unfunded mandates that will help with being able to close this budget gap.
Very fine. Thank you. Thank you so much. And I know that you shared that with the E W D committee, but if it's possible, could, um, you and, uh, board member Route have an, in a meeting, uh, between now and our next board meeting to maybe put together, um, just to, just help us to develop, um, some sort of advocacy tool around those unfunded mandates. That could be a letter, you know, some type of memo, just so that we can share it with board members and they can possibly sign it or, you know, call their county council members to say, you know, hey, these are things that we're now responsible for that we haven't been, that are going to significantly impact, you know, our, our budget.
I mean, certainly, I mean, you know, again, I provided the information of board member routes. I'm happy to meet and talk through it further. I'm not sure how else, what additional information would be helpful in order to help support that, but it was just kind of a one pager that sort of outlined all the different unfunded mandates, the impact of those. Um, I think even had in there the notes around what each of those related to. So, I mean, I'm happy to support and provide information in a different format. Um,
That, that would help. Maybe just this conversation so that we can, to support with the advocacy. Um, I just had a quick question and this made time to operations as well. You know, something that I've wondered about, I know that we have a lot of unused buildings, uh, within the school system. And I'm wondering, there are a lot of churches that are seeking, you know, to find a church home. They're looking for buildings. Uh, have we, are we in the process of selling some of our unused properties to, um, local organizations? And that's just a general question that I have. Um, I don't know if, if that's something that's in another presentation that we, that's in the, the facilities master plan that maybe, um, we, we will be talking about, but I did want to just ask that question.
It's a timely question. Uh, Assistant Superintendent Washington will, will, uh, make a response.
Yeah, so, um, uh, board member, great question. There's an administrative procedure, twenty-five seventy-one, uh, that outlines exactly what the process is for determining the future use of closed buildings. Um, to note, P G C P S does not have the ability to sell any facility. Um, all we can do is surplus it back to the county for their disposition. So we have, uh, if we do not have a school use for a facility, then we can, um, uh, advocate to the board to approve and to, um, the I A C to approve what is known as a surplus back to, um, uh, the county. And then the county will determine how they can dispose of the property. Um, so we do not have the ability to, um, to, to sell because we own land in trust for the county. So we, we are, we are the owner as an agent of the county, not in, in any way having the ability to dispose of that property ourself. Um, and so that is, uh, set forth. Uh, and that policy really lays out what are the school needs for these facilities? If we do not have any, um, then, um, the next step is to make a recommendation to the, um, superintendent, uh, that we would then move to, um, surplus that property back, uh, to the county. We just went through that with, with Old Fairmont Heights, um, high school. Um, and so that is the process that, that, uh, exists for us um, as it relates to disposing of excess or additional, uh, unused school facilities.
Thank you. I, I'd like to revisit that. I'd actually like to see if board member Route, um, if you could talk to, uh, Mister Washington or just get an understanding of how other districts of our size um, are able to possibly use some of their unused properties for profit. I mean, I, I'm wondering, can we lease? Can we rent? I mean, if the building isn't completely condemned and there are organizations that want to lease something from us, you know, why can't, you know, I'm just wondering, can we have another look at that? I mean, I just think that, given the amount of properties that we do, that we are, you know, in possession of, that are not being used as we're building new properties, you know, how, how can we better lever some of our assets? That's my question. And I, I don't know when that policy came into being and sort of what was the context surrounding that, but I'm just wondering, you know, I'm always trying to think of, you know, the what-if and that's, that's my question there.
De- definitely. And that's something that we're looking at as well. Um, but one of the big key, this is actually state code. Um, and I can provide you with the state code there, but the baseline is that we have the ability to lease, but it has to be tied to a school function. So we can't lease it to a non-school entity, um, to take advantage of, because if you play it out, we basically become a competitor to the county, uh, because from an economic development standpoint. Um, and so that, but that is, I can provide the, the, the code because we're looking at and, and have utilized that for the public private partnership. That's how we're able to do that piece of it because it's tied to a school use. Um, and so, but definitely can, can share, uh, the code language and the administrative procedure. Uh, but those are kind of the underpinnings of this. This is not just a P G C P S directed. This is, uh, code, uh, state code or statute that, uh, we've, uh, are working and operating under.
Yes, and thank you for that context. And I mean, if we were to become, you know, be in competition with the county, I mean, sometimes in business, little competition is good, right? Because maybe we could bring in some businesses that are looking for. I mean, sometimes in business, little competition is good, right? Because maybe we could bring in some businesses that are looking for. Locations like ours to rehab and reventi- and re-rerenovate, to renovate um in order to meet their needs. I know I'm looking in other districts, you know, across the country where, you know, people are taking old buildings. And turning them into offices or, or housing or, you know, what have you. And I'm just wondering if we can try to see, you know. Where we might have some flexibility or might be able to advocate. And, and I know that this is a broader conversation, but sometimes I just would like to just. Inject that into our discussion, you know, to see where it goes. But I do thank you for that context and providing me with um. You know, sort of the history of how we got here. Go ahead, uh, board member route.
You know, you know, I perked up over here when you started talking about use of lands, um, because. There are, you are so correct. There are so many districts that are util- reutilizing these spaces to create. Um, maker, maker communities and communities to, to utilize for school use. And so I, I would like to pause and ask for the definition of school use before I misspeak. So school use, does that include um before-school, after-school, summer enrichment? Like what is, what are we talking about for school use? Can you define that?
I don't have, I'm just going on the text and I can provide, there's uh legislative intent and, and other information. And I can definitely provide the uh, the, the code language, but we, we have, because we are a school system, we, we've kind of stayed constrained. To our focus and uh around school use and operations, but I can definitely provide that uh. Uh, code language to you um for uh, for consideration and, and uh. Um, probably um provide, uh, and from there, you'd be able to look at, you know, um legislative intent. And, and other things that the uh statute tries to get at. And, you know, this was, I don't know when, when the statute was passed, so it may have been a long time ago as well. So, uh, but, but that's what we are abound by right now.
Yeah, this is, I would love for you to share that information with me. Um, just because, you know, working. Uh, you know, we shouldn't do this in a silo, especially if there is something through our innovation department that we have within PG CPS. That there's something, I know Dr. White, they're always working on something innovative. And so if we could, you know, utilize the county council. To, you know, I feel like we, we should be working definitely more closely, closer with, you know, our, our legislators. Who um can really help our school system and create opportunities that we need for like after-school programs. I mean, we are starving for space here um in the DMV area. And this, these are, th- these are ways where. Uh, government use buildings, we can be able to do. So something similar to like Fairmont Heights, I would really like to see. Um, us to do more of that type of work so that we are partnering with our government partners. And even our state to co-locate maybe services, anything. I mean, I just want to get so innovative because, you know. We, we have some good properties. So thank you so much, uh, board member and Mr. Washington. I'm looking forward to receiving that information.
Um, thank you. And, and this upcoming legislative season, the board is going to have its own lobbyist. And this might be an issue that maybe they can take up at the state level to just say, you know, this, we have a unique situation. You know, we're doing this, you know, first in the state P three, which is going to render some of our buildings, you know, unusable. We want to be able to leverage those assets, like maybe that this is something that we can um support as well. Um. Uh, this upcoming legislative season. Okay, um, so were there any other questions for Chief Howell um at this time? Okay, uh, board member Harris, you can go next.
Hey, Chair, a question for you. Do we have access to a list of all the buildings that we think might be usable for what you're mentioning?
Um, I, I'm actually going to toss that back over to Dr. Coleman. I, I have a general understanding, but I think that. That list does exist. I don't have.
Okay, yeah, I think, I just think it'd be useful for, for all of us to have. Um, so yeah, let's toss it to Dr. Coleman.
Okay, okay, great.
The answer is yes, we do. And it can be provided for sure.
Thank you so much. Um, okay, so follow-ups and next steps. So the follow-ups from our April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four committee meeting will be posted on board docs upon receipt. Again, I want to thank you, everyone, for a great meeting. Um, our next meeting will be June twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Uh, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, hand up, sorry.
Yeah, I, we wanted to also let the uh, the OBFA committee know. There is a scheduled June eleventh EFMP meeting uh before the next June thirteenth meeting. Uh, be, once uh that information uh will be sent uh by communications. And we will make sure that information is sent to the board office as soon as it's uh prepared to go out. So I just wanted to uh follow that up, is that there's a meeting that has been scheduled and that will occur before the thirteenth.
Okay, thank you so much. I really appreciate that. Thank you. Um, so it's been moved and seconded. Um, uh, all in favor? Okay, the time is now five fifty-seven PM and we are adjourned. Have a good night, everyone. Thank you so much.
Good night.